Good evening. We call this meeting to order for the regular session of the Mayor and Council, City of Bisbee, County Cochise, the State of Arizona, on Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022, at 7:00 PM, in our council chambers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Winetta Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Joni Jacomino is excused. Councilmember Frank Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Aye.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Mel Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Aye.
City staff, Stephen Pocken, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Joelle Landers, Personnel Director, Matthew Gurney, Public Works Director, Doug Taylor, City Planner, Alberti Chaba, Police Chief, Jim Richardson, Acting Fire Chief, Joe Estes, City Attorney.
Thank you, everybody. For a moment of silence tonight, a couple of things. First, I want everybody to just, I'm gonna take a little extra time tonight, but for a minute, just, we lost three homes in fires this week, and so three families have been made homeless, and we wanna think about them. But then, we got some really bad news today with the passing of Lucci Jacomino. She was a little bit to all of us, I think. She certainly was to me. When I joined the council, she was on the other side of me, and I learned a lot from her. And, I don't know, I mean, you can't say enough about her and her dedication and cooking skills and everything else. And it's another great loss to our, to our town, and I just wanna wish, Joni, of course, our council member, and Charles, our guest, and so please, let's spend a moment thinking about the people that were affected, and also Lucci and all she's given to, and I'll give, after this, I'll open it up and give some personal privileges if somebody would like to say something else. Let's have a moment. Thank you. If they want to take a personal privilege and speak to what Lucci meant for them, I think it's, I'm gonna, you bet.
I've been trying to put a few thoughts down because my thoughts are scattered everywhere. But it is with the heaviest of hearts that my family and myself offer condolences to Charles, Joni, and Teslina on the loss of Lucci. There are so many things to say about her, but it would take all night. She lived in Re, Bisbee, especially the youth. If there was a fundraiser or benefit, Lucci was always there helping out. It is an honor and a privilege to work and serve with Lucci on the council, and when she served on the school board, the students were her priority, but so were we as staff, and we always appreciated that. She had our back. On the personal side, I can't even begin to tell you how many times she's been me, been my kids, and my grandkids. Over the years, we've shared so many laughs, had great conversations, and I will miss that tremendously. I will even miss the scoldings, and there's been quite a few over the years. The Fourth of July will never be the same, but she wouldn't want us to dwell on what we're missing, but rather focus on what we can do to improve our community. And, you know, to say that me and my family will miss her is an understatement, because there is no one else who can ever feel her shoes, and we will miss her tremendously. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
If I could just have a moment, because...
Sure. She was your boss for a while.
She was my boss, and don't you forget it. I had, had a job interview one day in December of 2005, and about 9:30, then Mayor Earp had called and said, "Can you come over to City Hall tomorrow and talk to us about a contract?" And so, I was there 8:00 o'clock the next morning, and I walked into Mayor's office and sat down and negotiated a contract with Mayor Earp, Lucci Jacomino, Mayor Krebs, and John McKinnon. Despite the fact that I had just come off a job offer in another city where the negotiations did work out after eight weeks of trying, they made it so easy that we were done and out of there in 20 minutes. Then, we went out on the porch and had a smoke.
Yeah, we all smoked that day?
We all smoked that, we don't anymore. And the, but the one thing that probably, I really appreciated more than anything else was, you know, back at that time, we were dealing with a morale issue, we were dealing with budget issues, we were dealing with other, other kinds of issues that just made working there not all that fun, so I decided that we were gonna do barbecue. And so, I haven't mentioned to Lucci one day that I was gonna bring my barbecue grill over on Friday, and we're gonna, you know, make some hot dogs for the, for the employees. And she says, "Hot dogs." And so anyway, by the time it was over, I had, I don't know, 30 pounds, 40 pounds of ribs already cooked, and, and the sauce in buckets delivered to the porch on City Hall. And so, all I, all I ended up having to do was get them warm and put the sauce on them. Employees all brought something to share, and then Lucci went home, and then she came back about 15 minutes later with two sheet cakes. That was Lucci. And anyway, more recently, of course, you know, she's, hadn't been a public official for a number of years now, but that didn't stop her from coming to City Hall. We used to see her about, oh, once a week, sometimes, once every two weeks. And last time she came by to visit was just a couple, three weeks ago, and, and she told me, she says, "Okay, so, I'm getting out of the business, I'm gonna make everybody a cake, and then when I, when I run out of ingredients and I'm retiring from the cake business." Well, of course, she never made that. Sorry. If there was anyone in Bisbee who touched lives any more than Lucci, I can't blame them. And Bisbee would be the same. Thank you.
You bet. In fact, I was walking out of City Hall the last time she came in to see you, and we had a nice little conversation outside, well, it was quite a conversation, actually.
Oh, it was.
And, of course, it's about the cemetery, and I have to say that I've never seen anybody more defensive with the youth council in my life, and so don't even think about touching that cemetery. You know, there's so much there, I can't, we can't even talk about it all, but I'm hoping we'll have a chance down the road to, to, to bring up more memories. But, but yes, let's, let's just remember the family and, and respect their wishes and, and, and just get through this one way or another. All right. Student special agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, just quick announcement, is, I am pulling items four, five, and item six tonight. There's been some last-minute changes, and so those will probably not be seen again. Okay, I'm Urban. We're going to, I'm gonna do a little proclamation here, this is for the letter carriers. This is the Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day. This is whereas the National Association of Letter Carriers, Branch 704, represents all letter carriers in Tucson and many other post offices in southern Arizona, and whereas the NALC, Branch 704, United States Postal Service, and the AFL-CIO have joined together with local community food banks for the past 29 years for the Annual Letter Carriers Food Drive. And whereas, the food drive was initiated in 1991 to assist the many community food banks, food pantries, and homeless shelters throughout the nation, and whereas, the food drive effort is a community-based endeavor, and all food items donated remain within each local community to serve the needs of the community. And whereas, in the year 2012, the NALC, Branch 704, Letter Carriers collected 1,078,940 pounds of food in southern Arizona. So, now, therefore, being resolved that I can budge Mayor of City of Bisbee, Arizona, to hereby proclaim May 14th, 2022, to be Letter Carriers Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day. So, they say if you just leave it out by your mailbox, they'll pick it up on that day and, or bring it in. I don't know if someone else is here to speak to it, I don't think so, but there we have it. All right, I have one signed up for a call to public. Jim, come on up and give your full name and...
James Mullin. Jim Mullin. I bought the copper green annex from Patricia Stewart's estate last March, not this March, but last March. I just put in a proposal on buying the old Bisbee High School. I'm doing my research on that. After I submitted the proposal, I found out that, that high school hadn't paid taxes. And you might say, "Well, yeah, it's Cochise County." Well, when the government buys a building, they buy it. Did, did Cochise County build the old, build Bisbee High School? I don't think so. I don't go back for facts. But so, I started investigating. I got the Cochise County tax map, and I live on Brubaker Gulch. I first came to town in 1996. I started living here full-time in 2017. I live on Brubaker Gulch. And as I'm sure you know, at the bottom of Brubaker Gulch, opposite the Scottish Exchange, are two vacant lots that have been vacant for, I don't know how many years, but, they were vacant in 1996. They pay $197.50 a year in taxes. I will ask you, do you think those two properties are valuable? $197.50 a year? And I know you don't set the taxes, but you have influence. I'm gonna make a proposal. The other thing is the, what they call the free store on Brubaker Gulch. They pay 400 and something in taxes. The owner of that lot lives in Cupertino, California. Cupertino, California is the home of Apple Computers. How long do you think they would let the free store exist in Cupertino, California? One minute? Five minutes? Basically, vacant, empty land, and I'm talking about business properties, like your backyard, we all have parcels in, in the tax. I'm talking about downtown Old Bisbee, vacant land, vacant property. It should be taxed more, not less than if it was empty. Give you an example, with the two lots I'm talking about, which are owned by the LLC that owns the Scottish Exchange, and they've done nothing wrong, I'm gonna emphasize this, if you get a tax bill for $197, you don't pay 600. That's fine, I, I have no issue with that. If you raise the tax, let's say if somebody built, if the tax was more than if a building was there, like $4,000 a year, they might sell it, somebody might buy it and build a building, put a business in it, and pay employees, and pay more taxes. If you're $22 million in debt, $197.50 for a vacant lot in downtown Bisbee is not gonna meet your budget. And you should tell me, is that my time? Sorry, I'm sorry, I, again, I want to emphasize, nobody did anything illegal, it's just the way it is, it's the system, and I would urge you to change this. Use your influence. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to general business. We move to accounts payable. Motion?
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $297,411.48.
A second, Dan. Do we have questions?
Just a couple.
Okay, go ahead.
On page six. So, let me just get that, I have it in my notes here, but I want to... Account 1188 under Garage, Automotive Training, Auto, Auto-ization, Ford Hyper Course, just, what was that for? $458.
Go ahead, Dan.
That course is for both of our mechanics to get training on, online training, it's two nights for, to learn and to, to service the Ford Hyperways that we have in the police department, so they have better training on that.
But this was a new, new cars that didn't have experience with, and now we do.
Yes.
Well, you can stay, can you stay there?
Yep.
Page six. All right. If, if, if he wants to.
Yeah. Let's go to page eight, I mean, page six still, 3551. It says, "Other fluids lubricants, Synergy Petroleum, $1,423." The street mega flow, I just, the number, it's just a little bit, a little out of...
Gasoline.
For what?
The streets.
All the streets, a part of the streets, was, I mean...
Yeah, 'cause I think our actual gasoline is at the top. This might be...
Yeah, this is, it's different, that's why.
This would be probably the different, like, the hydraulic oil, engine oil, and stuff that we get, and, that we get at the shop.
Okay, so you get this, and you store it, then you use it as needed?
Yes.
So, okay, so that was purchased, okay.
Yeah, it's more lubricants.
Yeah, so you, you purchase it, it wasn't specific that you've used on a, on a, that's why it looks out of place, so it's a, it's a, okay.
Yeah.
That explains the number, 1,423.
Same company that we get up.
Yeah, I, I've seen that, they have other belts, but this one was just a little, you know, was a different account, that's why.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Can I continue, finish a couple more?
You bet. You got the floor.
You got this, man.
You got the floor.
Okay, well, that's me. Page eight. Let me go down to 6536, Napa. Just, it was a little out of, wait, let me stay on page eight here.
Oil filters, 527?
No, yeah, 527.58, just, yeah, that's right.
Tire rods, I think, cut off.
Yeah, that does say tire rod. I'm not, on top of my head, I'm not sure what vehicle that is for. I'd have to look into the...
So, something went wrong, and you had to repair, it wasn't just oil and filter for 527, am I right?
Correct. Yeah, that's why, yeah, is it, like the mayor is saying, it does say tire, it starts to say tire rod. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what all that entails.
I made my notes, so I just need to go to the page, and then I'll be done, I promise.
No, not that one.
Okay, sure, sure. Okay. Yeah, I know. And just, this was also a little out of line, electric, APS, 1097, 42 worn cutoff.
What page?
12. The top, the top, page 12. 870. Since it says worn, and I'm from that area, I want to know what this was for.
21.
21. It's a 21.
Oh, that is electricity for our Mule Golds lift station. So that's off of the Mule Golds cutoff and Highway 8.
Mule Golds, okay.
You weren't real sure, were you?
Yeah, I know, it says worn, so I'm just like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's the Warren cutoff, or that's Arizona dreaming.
Is that what you call it?
Yeah.
All right, I'm done.
I, I do have one question now, maybe for the finance director, which, because we're ordering the fuel in bulk now, don't we break that back out into individual departments that's gathered around now?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, that's my thought. That's why I was getting confused, I thought that oil synergy was what we did at the gas line. Okay, thanks. Somebody else? All right, we have a motion, a second, to pay accounts payable in the amount of $297,411.48. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. unanimous, please. Okay, we're moving on to item number two, is approval of the consent agenda. Tonight, we have one set of minutes, we have a right-of-way use permit for brats that use the main street from the Ironman Post Office on Saturday, October 22nd, and we have three more extension of premises, patio permits by electric brewing. Does anybody have anybody, anything to pull? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through S, second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda as shown. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. All right, just on the old business, old businesses, item number three, discussion and possible approval of ordinance O-2208. This is authorizing the sale and transfer of city property located primarily south of and across the right-of-way from 125 Star Avenue, a vacant parcel described as the north half of APN 103-60-249, lots 19 and 20. Mr. Taylor.
Mayor and Council, you may remember this from the auction, March 15th. The successful bidder were Mr. and Mrs. Burford, and they bid the amount of $18,000. This is the second appearance for this tonight before you, and I think you know what it is.
Any questions? Mr. Taylor, any comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the ordinance O-22-08, authorizing the sale and transfer of city property located primarily south of, across the right-of-way from 125 Star Avenue. It is a vacant parcel described as north half, APN 103-60-249, lots 19 and 20.
I second.
We have a motion, a second, for item number three, on the agenda for approving ordinance O-2208. Roll call.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. We'll skip item four, five, and six, and we're moving on to item seven. This is a discussion and possible approval of resolution R-2208. No, it's not, let me just, R-2208. Oh, it's a resolution. I knew the numbers were the same, it's just got that R in front of it. Let's start over.
Keeping you on your toes.
Yeah, we started at 5:30, man. Discussion possible approval of resolution R-2208, adopting a tentative budget for the City of Bisbee for FY 2023, as well as give notice of the time for the public hearing to taxpayers for adoption of the budget. So, Mr....
Okay, thank you, and good evening, again. For two nights last week, Monday and Tuesday, we went through an extensive review of the budget, basically Carrie and myself, meeting with Mayor and Council, which is a time-honored tradition that seems like the format we've used as long as I can remember, and it must be working, 'cause we still do it. So, we went through all of the budget, from the general fund all the way through to the capital improvements fund, Fund 99, and had a discussion pretty much on every single one of them. So, the submitted budget includes a general fund budget of, excuse me, let's blow up my power warranty. General fund budget of $10 million. Keep it in mind, $10 million is, $2 million of the $10 million is the $2 million that you wanna use this year to rebuild City Hall. So, it's really an $8 million budget when you subtract that one major expenditure, and basically, that's just going to be transferred to the capital improvements fund from the general fund, and that's got to be that. And a total citywide budget of $68,700,000 and change, which, again, is, you know, probably three times higher than we normally bring to you, but because of the large amount of funding dollars available, mostly through the ARPA and from the Infrastructure Act, both of which were passed earlier this year and late last year, it has given us the opportunity to apply for a lot of major capital improvements, mostly in utility accounts, that we would not have done otherwise. So, while it, it looks like we're spending more, actually, the $68 million is a lot of applied, a lot of grants that we have applied for, while they're applied for, they have not yet been determined whether we'll receive them or not, so at the end of the year, we may or may not see that same level of, of activity. And also, keep in mind that a couple of those are utility replacements, like the fire suppression system and the sewer ladders, that will actually be a multi-year project, two to three to four years, depending on how it works out. But when we apply for grant, we have to put the entire amount in the budget, even though we'll be spending that over multiple years when we, when we do receive the grant. So, it's, it's an important thing to distinguish about. We have opportunities that we probably haven't had in a long time. It, it does skew things in the budget to look like it's a lot different than it was when it really isn't, so we need to bear that in mind. So, okay, so the resolution that is before you sets the tentative budget for fiscal year 2022, which begins July 1st of this year and ends June 30th of the next year. Also, an important distinction about adopting a tentative budget is that when you, when you adopt a tentative budget by ordinance tonight, or excuse me, by resolution tonight into, that will effectively set your expenditure limitation for the fiscal year. You will be able to spend less than you will not be able to spend more. So, that's an important distinguish, and, and it's, I don't know how unique it is, but I know I worked in three states, and this is the only state that does that. But the importance to it is that, okay, we've thought through everything we could possibly need, and, and now we're saying, this is all, this is all we're gonna spend. So, that's what it is in, in state law. So, also, this also gives notice of a public hearing for citizens to be held on June 7th at 7:00 PM. So, June 7th, which is, I don't know if that's a Q thing, it's probably our first meeting in June, so we will hold a public hearing at that time, and citizens can come forward and make recommendations on how we spend our money. And then, finally, after that, they will schedule a final adoption of budget. Questions?
Staff recommends group. Yep. Questions? We've spent two very long nights, and we got done. Done it too, but.
I just wanna, I, I do wanna, um, I do want to mention how productive, um, and, um, positive I thought that those two nights were. You know, uh, I had told you at the beginning that I wasn't gonna spoon-feed line by line, uh, which I didn't do, and I think it actually, uh, by not doing that, I guess, I think we actually had more productive discussion than we would have if we would have done it in a more elementary fashion, so. Um, I know, and Kerry feels the same way I do about that, so. Uh, appreciate the kind of dialogue that we had moving up to this.
I made a few adjustments, but, to be quite honest, uh, there were very few, and so that, to me, means that they brought a prudent budget to us, or else we certainly didn't fudge the numbers wrong for our budget.
Don't say Fudge.
Well, my last name's Fudge.
Don't ever use that. Fudge.
You gotta grind, you know?
Maybe, maybe bad, but not fudge.
Hey, guys, it's getting worse.
Yeah, I know. I wanted to say this, so that's why.
Somebody said, when you dug, once you dug the hole, what, once you dug yourself a hole.
Stop, stop digging. Alright, no, it, it was, uh, it was a very well-presented budget, I appreciate that. The, for the questions, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the budget.
I second.
Well, gotta do a resolution.
I move to approve resolution R dash twenty-two dash zero eight, adopting a tentative budget for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three.
I second. God, no, I'm beholden now. I'm beholden, huh?
We, uh, we have a motion in a second to approve resolution R dash twenty-two oh eight, adopting the tentative budget for the city of Bisbee. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sui?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. So, we're moved. Alright, we'll move on to item eight. This is a discussion of possible approval of notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-two oh nine. This is accepting the transfer of real property from Southeast Arizona Rev- Resil- there we go again.
Renovations.
Renovations LLC, located at six oh one West Melanie Lane, Bis- Mr. Park.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the, uh, the LLC that the mayor just mentioned, has a, uh, ownership of a piece of property that, um, you will probably recognize more because it is basically a subdivision that wraps around, um, the, uh, basically, what the school board office building, which also houses the library annex and the science center. Around the playground and up to, maybe there's a picture in your packet, is a subdivision that, believe it or not, was, um, adopted, or excuse me, uh, the subdivision was approved in two thousand and six. The owner of the subdivision, uh, graded the ground off just enough uh, for me to start getting phone calls from the county administrator, uh, asking if I was planning to flood out the county office building, just to get the ground laid. So, we fixed that, and the developer left town and never came back, so. It's been basically saying they're foul, but it does have an approved subdivision on it, so. Um, the, the, the first, uh, the, the first thing that's, that you have to do when you're trying to do residential development is get your plat approved, and, uh, whether or not it can be, um, developed using this plat, or if somebody comes in for a plat amendment, that depends. Um, our intention is to accept the donation of the land, um, and, uh, we have no, uh, fixed plans for the property other than to sell it eventually. And, uh, the, um, the one thing that our planners might do is he's gonna start checking around and see if there are any home builders in the area that would like to continue developing that property, because it is in an area where, uh, we believe that if there's a builder out there, um, that would like to build housing, um, that is, um, how shall I put this? Um, not a bloody fortune. Because housing, the cost of bloody fortune, value itself, easily in a more modest subdivision. So, what we'll be doing, at least in the short term, is looking for somebody that may want to develop nice homes, uh, that, uh, people can buy and move to Bisbee, so. So, anyway, um, let's see, what else was I gonna say? I think that was about it, unless, doesn't like to add anything else to that. So, uh, council, uh, excuse me, staff recommends approval of perjury.
Alright. Sure, go ahead.
So, when Sierra Cobra came in and proposed all of these to us, it, it was a complete planned neighborhood. Is that going to be a requirement of anybody else who comes in? I mean, they had, you know, a park plan there, I believe they had a fire station or something planned there, and, you know, other things like that. Is it going to be, are they going to be required to have that complete? Plan?
I can only answer that by saying that's your call. Um, you know, um, if someone, first of all, of course, once you become sitting on a property, it has to be auctioned. Um, and I think at the point where you would find buyer and would entertain, uh, an auction, then you could probably have those discussions, uh, at that point in the auction. Uh, they would probably submit that with their paperwork. I, I, I don't quite remember the fire station, the Anna, but I do remember the pocket park and the, uh, uh, there's also a detention pond on the property. That was what, uh, prompted, um, Mr. Ortega to call me, on one Sunday afternoon after a monsoon storm, because it wasn't holding water. But it is, I think, fifty-eight residential lots. And basically, two streets, one street and two, and three cul-de-sacs. Robert would like the one that says Bronco. And, uh, see, I know who the Bronco fans are in this, this town. And, uh, so, um, and basically, from each cul-de-sac, there's a walkway path to, um, to the, um, I'd call it a pocket park, it's a little bigger than a pocket, but it's a park. And so, the, now, uh, what we would do is, uh, pull out the, I hope it didn't burn up in a fire, um, pull out the approved plat. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say that I'm relatively certain, uh, we still have all the paperwork from that in the server. So, that would start, I mean, the easiest thing to do would be to sell it for the use that it was approved for, because if we sold it to somebody and they wanted to develop it in a different fashion, they would have to start the process over from scratch. And that, of course, would involve the planning commission, and also you.
I might still have those plans.
Well, I'll tell you, if it, you know, I'm hoping it's still on the server, because if we had paper, it's gone.
I think the plat is in the county, because it's all plowed out with.
Right, but there would be paperwork we would have for our delegations as well, which we probably still have.
And at the same time, when they were proposing that, there was also another proposal on the north side of the highway. And I, I'm thinking that's where they were talking about now, about the fire station, because they wanted to put in a man-made lake, and, I mean, it was grandiose plan.
I remember that.
Yeah. And it was kind of at the same time.
That was slightly larger.
Yes, yes.
Like two hundred acres. Which is household, too.
The whole thing?
Mm-hmm.
There's only one. Okay, Mel, you have a question?
Is this, I mean, because of the difficulty of one soul has one development, is it possible, can be sold separate parcels? Is it?
No.
No, the, the issue you run into is, is because as a, as a subdivision, it's got public infrastructure that has to go into it, so. An individual couldn't just buy one parcel and then try to build a house, because then they would be responsible for bringing in water, sewer, electric, and all that for just that one parcel, so you'd have to sell it as a
So it has to be, uh?
As a, as a complete subdivision.
So, that's why I thought maybe it would have been easier to sell them as parcels, but like you said.
And that's, it's one of the reasons why it probably never
It never got there.
Because the, the, the cost to go in and do those streets, sidewalks, water, sewer, and all of that, you know, is a, it's a big
Yeah.
financial expenditure upfront.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that they have to put in to be able to start selling the house.
Yeah.
I had, um, one estimate that was shown to me by the owner of the, the current owner of the property that, uh, showed utilities and paid in the neighborhood of two million dollars. I'm not sure that's high enough.
No, no.
But, anyway, that was, that was one person's, one engineer's estimate.
And how many parcels? How many homes can be devised? Fifty-six? Fifty-six. Yeah, someone has to do the math, I guess, and see if they can tell you some math.
You've got an opportunity for you, Matt.
I'm looking at it, actually.
You like math. You're not supposed to say.
It's my fault.
I mean, I, my, one statement I'd like to make is that you've always been looking for a park in San Jose, and if we can make this happen, that would be a requirement in my, in my estimation to, I would lower the price to whomever is going to buy it with the condition, and it might be a little more than a pocket park, we might end up taking a couple of the other, uh, maybe one of the parcels away and do a better than what they did here, but that would be, would be my preference.
And, and Mayor, slowly, uh, but surely, I think there's a transformation going on on that adjacent parcel right now. Look at what has happened. I'm just gonna call it the schoolyard. In the last, I don't know, three or so years, uh, versus what happened all the way up to, leading up to that three or so years ago, uh, there's a lot more stuff there than there was, and it's, a lot of it has to do with the science center, um, and, and the library annex, and, uh, and their ability to, um, obtain a small grant here for a patio, and a small grant there for something else. And, uh, so it is slowly transforming. Uh, there is playground equipment, of course, on the site, it's, well, uh, my vintage.
Marginal.
Yeah. Well, I, that's why I said my vintage.
It was there in the high school and at school there, most of it.
Yeah, so it's my vintage.
Couple of years.
Yeah, a couple of years old. So, um, yeah, uh, I think there are unlimited possibilities to actually take that whole area. And I know the school district is more than happy to cooperate if we can make some things happen over there, uh, to assist us in, in transforming that whole area, because I think that has unlimited potential at this point.
It's one of the big areas we have growth, that we have land available.
That's right. And, uh, could end up being the Luchu Jackson Park or something like that.
Wouldn't that be great, wouldn't it? Yeah. Well, with that, more questions? Comments? About, uh, my motion? I'll, uh, I'll make it. I move that we approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-two oh nine, accepting the transfer of real property from Southeast Arizona Renovations LLC, located at six oh one Melanie Lane, lots one through fifty-six, Sierra Cobra of Spence.
Second.
Alright, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sui?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Alright, moving forward, we are now into item number nine. This is a discussion of possible approval to go out to bid for on-call engineering services to include the not limited to structural, mechanical, environmental highway, and civil. Matt, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor Council. So, we're, uh, the Pella Works Department requests approval to go out to bid for on-call, uh, engineers services to include anything that you just said. And, uh, that is because of the on-call engineers that we had on contract, that contract has now ended, and so we need to go back out to contracts, so we have some, the engineers that we can get. So, this.
With a basis on minutes per hour, or is that why it's gonna be bid hour?
Yes.
Questions? Any questions? Who? Who was it that we have, we have before?
Right now, we have, well, we have the W L B group, Souter, Miller, and, uh, Wes.
Wesley.
Wes Lund.
Wes, Wes.
Yes.
That's the one I was. Any other questions?
Oh, you're either going to open it up for, um, other, uh, groups to come in, or you're considering asking the W L B group to submit a?
No, we're, we're, um, putting out to bid, um, so anybody can, uh, put their, uh, any engineering firm can put their bid in, including the ones that we already have. If they want to stay with us, uh, they can put, put their name in the hat.
Some open bid?
Open bid?
Yep.
Just as a point of reference, um, these firms are only used when we need them. Um, and so, we have an hourly rate, uh, that they submit to us, and then we pick the ones that we believe are best, not only the best hourly rate, but, uh, exhibit the characteristics that we need. Unfortunately, there's no single engineering firm that can do everything we need to do, and so that's why we usually end up with a multitude of them. Sorry.
No, just a question, so, do you go on, how do you go about this? So, the public know, do you publish this, you put the notes in the newspaper, I mean?
Yes, all of them.
All, all of them.
And then, um, I'll be even trying to, uh, research some different engineers and, uh, get with other cities and say, hey, what engineers do you have?
Okay.
Kind of reach out, hey, we're, we're going out to bid for engineers who would like to.
Okay.
And when would you, what would, you want the bids in by, like?
Like, usually it's about fifteen days, right?
Minimum is fifteen days.
Minimum of fifteen, fifteen days, so. And with this, it might be, or it might want to be more.
Anything else? Alright, um, I motion.
I move to approve, uh, to go out for bid for all of our call engineering services to include, but not limited to structural, mechanical, environmental highway, the civil.
I second that.
I have a motion in a second to go out to bid for on-call engineering services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, so move. Moving on to item ten, discussion of possible approval to purchase a land-up pressure washer in the amount of seven thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars to be used by all Pella Works departments. What do you have to get?
Hey, so, uh, Pella Works Department, including also, um, uh, police and fire, also, uh, when they so need to use it, have used, uh, the pressure washers that we've had for the last fifteen-plus years. Uh, we've had two that, uh, when one's needs to get repaired, so we can have the other one that we move in. Um, and they have served us well. But, they are both past their lifespan, uh, and we, um, a lot of it is stuff that we can't get replaced, uh, and so we are asking to go out to, uh, and, and purchase a land-up pressure washer, which is the same brand that we have now, and they did very good over, I mean, fifteen-plus years. I don't know even exactly how long they worked. So, this is used to, for the mechanics, cleaning parts, uh, for our garbage trucks, to clean the garbage trucks, because they get very nasty. Clean those and, and any equal, our regular guys, trucks, and everything that we do, we use this.
Pretty much stays at the shop, then?
It does stay at the shop.
About six hundred pounds, I just, it's not one of you just driving back in a pickup truck, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Alright, um, hopefully you'll use it on a few dumpsters after the summer, or next to restaurants, okay?
Yes, that's what we use it for as well.
Okay. Because it does have a heating unit. Okay, because it does have a heating unit in it.
Yeah, yeah, we, we need that heating unit, because it, um, breaks up the grease and the, all the grime and nastiness that gets on the garbage trucks. And then also for the dumpsters and anything else that we need.
Any other questions, comments? All right, motion.
I move to approve the purchase of a land-up pressure washer in the amount of seven thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the purchase of the land-up pressure washer. Um, the roll call on this one, thanks.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sui?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you. Moving on, we have two more. This is number eleven, this is discussion of possible approval of updates to job descriptions for the Copper Queen Mine Tour. Who wants to present? Ah, the one hiding in the back. I'm just kidding.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This evening, I have the last batch of job description updates for your review and approval. Um, these are the, uh, job descriptions for the Copper Queen Mine Tour. And these job descriptions were included in the updates. Um, the backup documentation here was presented to the Civil Service Commission at a special session meeting on Wednesday, March twenty-third. And they recommended moving forward with the job description updates, including the start of, starting rates of pay as listed for the mine tour. And this recommendation was unanimous with the exception of one member stating for conflict of interest. And they, um, positions, currently, there are two employees that will be, um, that will have an hourly rate increase. I did make an error, um, I have the fiscal impact little spreadsheet and I does still have public works under department and not Copper Queen Mine Tour. So my apologies for that error, but the fiscal impact, including salary in the areas, is still there and correct.
All right. And, uh, do I have now?
So the fiscal impact, the, the number you have there, fifty-one fifty, that's for the year?
That's for the upcoming budget year, yes.
Yes, for the year, so basically be impacted by fifty-one fifty on the two that.
Yes.
Yep. All right, um, I move to approve the updates to job descriptions for the Copper Queen Mine Tour.
Second.
I have a second to approve the updates for Copper Queen Mine Tour. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair says the ayes have it, so moved. All right, um, give me half a minute so I can get to item twelve. All right, item twelve, this is discussion of possible approval for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance, Delta Dental Insurance and, and Senatorie Lyons' renewal agreement.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, so we had, we recently received our renewal package, um, through our brokerage company, which is C-Biz and Becky Lopez, who we've had great success working with over the years. Um, initially, Blue Cross Blue Shield came back with a thirteen percent renewal rate. And that rate was renegotiated down to seven percent, which is wonderful. National average is about twelve. Um, an eight percent increase was anticipated and included in the, uh, fiscal year twenty-three budget, along with the additional twenty-five percent supplemental coverage for the base core family plans. And again, that's, that, that additional supplemental coverage was approved by Mayor Council some years ago. Blue Cross Blue Shield has also offered another year of the ten thousand dollars in wellness funds. And really looking forward to getting to use those funds in a more creative way to benefit the employees in the city, um, due to COVID and not getting to do, say, a Christmas party or a, you know, big health fair, picnic, things of that nature.
Barbecue.
Barbecue, yes. Um, so moving forward, I mean, many suggestions have been put forth about getting, you know, some picnic table areas, like something in City Hall for people to kind of, you know, commune, maybe have lunch together, you know, just really kind of enhance the space that we have there. Um, so with potentially City Hall, um, we definitely are hoping that we can put those funds to more like tangible, not that it wasn't tangible, but I prefer not to do cards every year. Um, Delta Dental issued a rate pass. V S P, which is the vision insurance, issued a three-point-seven percent increase for two years. Another option there that was offered was to have an increase in frame allowance. And the increase in frame allowance compared to the cost that it would be monthly and annually for each employee, unless I'm missing something, it doesn't seem worth a twenty-dollar additional allowance for your frames. Um, really, you're paying more than that twenty dollars within the year. So, uh, I don't have intention of accepting that, um, just continuing with the plan we have, which is very reasonable and good. Um, Mutual of Omaha, which handles our life insurance, A D and D, involuntary life insurance issued a rate pass. They also handle our short-term and long-term disability, and again, rate pass. And we began the employee assistance plan last year with Alliance Work Partners. And we are in the middle of the two-year rate guarantee, so there's no changes there.
All right, questions, council, comments? Well, thank you, you did a.
Good.
Great job of holding down those costs, I remember when medical costs, just the worst. And, oh, by the way, that ten thousand is the health piece.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Oh, barbecue, that's right.
That's right, health and barbecue.
You can, you can barbecue cauliflower.
We can't.
You can.
You can barbecue, yeah. Doesn't hurt, good.
Zucchini's good, too.
Remember, we're, we're at the end of our, our thing here, so, no more holding, so. All right, any other comments? Let's, um, have a motion on this one, and it's almost done. And a motion.
I move to approve the fiscal year twenty-three Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance, Delta Dental Insurance and, and Senatorie Lyons' renewal agreements.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the F Y three health insurance, uh, package. Do we need a vote on this?
Need a vote, but you can.
A roll call.
You can just do it.
All, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Uh, ayes have it, so moved.
Thank you.
Trying to, there's money involved, I guess there is, but. All right, um, I'm going to, uh, just skip, let the city manager have report before we go into, uh, mo, to executive session, just in case people want to check. Sorry. Nope.
Are you going to shut us for that one?
All right. See, it just doesn't get better.
Yeah. Okay, um, Mayor, uh, I just have one thing, uh, tonight. And, um, I'm, I'm going to, uh, break the rule that I was given a couple of days ago. Um, and tell you what's going on tomorrow, because I invited you all out to Camp Naco for a, an announcement of major importance. And, uh, unfortunately, as been embargoed and were again embargoed, uh, by the National Trust for Historic Preservation until five o'clock tomorrow morning. But it's eleven o'clock in Washington, D.C. right now, and they're never going to find out, I told you. Okay? Um, the, every year, the National Trust for Historic Preservation designates eleven properties um, that are considered, um, so important that, uh, they are willing to, um, put it out there and, and try to assist local communities in saving and improving their historic places. So, uh, and, and the, the name of the list is America's eleventh most endangered historic places, so it's time to move on to it. Um, Camp Naco made the list. We were notified last Wednesday, I think, uh, by the trust and, uh, of course, they, they gave the other, they gave the other ten that are going on the list a month of getting ready for this, and they gave us a week, not even. So, um, they are going to, uh, do a, uh, presser tomorrow morning in Washington at eight AM, which is, of course, five AM here. Um, we are going to follow that up locally with, with the presser, um, at nine AM at Camp Naco. Um, we have, of course, invited you all, um, and it has been noticed, and, uh, also some local media and, uh, some other media, but, um, uh, I mean, that's just the logistics of it. Um, as far, and, and I've been in and out of the historic preservation business for a good number of years now. Um, this is a very coveted list to get on, uh, because it influences people who grant money for fixing places like Camp Naco, um, to a degree that we couldn't possibly do locally on our own. And right now, uh, the Naco Heritage Trust has something on the order of two million dollars for the grant applications out there, um, that, that aren't even on our budget, um, that they have asked various agencies to award them to, to make the needed repairs, uh, to, uh, turn Camp Naco into a viable educational, uh, institution once again. So, um, um, when I say national importance, like you said, it's, it's one of the, it is the most coveted list in America for historic reservations, so, um, I, I think, well, first of all, my hands off, uh, uh, to the Naco Heritage Alliance, but mostly, uh, to Rebecca Roscoe, because, uh, she's been working on this now for almost twenty years. Um, but finally started to see some stuff happen and, um, and of course, since the city took ownership of the property in twenty eighteen, um, we've made a lot of improvements out there just to keep it from completely falling down. Um, and so, um, it, it'll be, it'll be nice to see, um, something, not just keep getting repaired, but actually improve. And I think that's, with this designation, I think we're going to start to see that happen, but, so. Anyway, uh, you come out at nine o'clock if you've got the time, I think it'll be a good time.
Hopefully you'll have some, maybe a congressman or a phone representative.
I'm hearing a big baby. So, if I got that about five o'clock.
So, yeah, personal privilege, but yes, that's, uh, this is a, quite an honor, because while our name will be spread across the entire nation, um, when, because they have a, a long reach, huh?
Will the city have any involvement in any way with this, like, as part of this?
It's really not up for discussion tonight.
Oh, it's not?
Yeah, I'll be happy to talk with you after the podcast, but, uh, this, by the way, this is not my first rodeo. Uh, the, uh, in, in my hometown in Ohio, uh, we actually got national park designation uh, for a battle that happened in seventeen ninety-four. And it started out very much like this, an empty field with nothing in it. And today, it's a highly-used, uh, very important, basically urban, urban park, so.
We've got some good, good things they've got planned out there, so if you come out tomorrow, maybe you can show them off.
Sure.
Um, any options?
That's it, thank you.
All right, and, uh, I will ask that, uh, we move on item thirteen, which is discussion of possible approval going to motion of executive session, uh, to go into an executive session.
Aye.
How, uh, you intend a motion to go into executive session?
I move, oh, come on. I move we go into executive session, second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair says the ayes have it, we are going into executive session. Thank you, everybody that was watching tonight.